So if you all be patient, folks want to sign it up, we'll get started here in a few minutes. It's a great crowd. Good to see everyone. Thank you. Turn it up. How's this? That better? What? Bonnie's giving me a signal. All right, we're doing another sound check. How's that? Is that a little better? I didn't expect this crowd. This is fantastic. Let's get started. My name is Doug Butler, and I'd like to welcome everyone to this town hall. This is a tradition going back to the 1633 in Massachusetts. The first town hall in America was 1633. So we are continuing that tradition. The first thing to do is we need to stand and give a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Thank you very much. The last phrase is liberty and justice for all. And I hope that's the reason we're all here today. Liberty and justice for all. Abraham Lincoln once said, Abraham Lincoln once said, "Public sentiment is everything. With public sentiment, nothing can fail. Without nothing can succeed." He believed that public opinion is a powerful force. That is why we are here today. Let's give a big hand for everyone that's here. Thank you. This is an opportunity today to share your opinion, your thoughts, and your feelings. So with that in mind, let's get started. We have some special guests here today, and I would like to introduce them one at a time. Our first special guest today is Pamela Stevens. Pamela was dedicated her whole life to public service. She served in the Air Force as a JAG attorney for 27 years. She holds the rank of Colonel and has served the USA around the world. From negotiating hostage crisis, persecuting child sex criminals, violent crime, and more. Colonel Stevenson served this country dutifully. Currently, Colonel Stevenson serves as the House Minority Floor Leader in the Kentucky State Legislature. Stevenson regularly is the only member to break through to Republican leadership, who holds, of course, a supermajority, to make the bad bills better. Colonel Stevenson works for her veterans, families, children, LGBTQ+ women's rights, and many other groups in the legislature. Colonel Stevenson is currently in her third term as a Kentucky House. Colonel Stevenson is a wife of 40 years, a mom of two children, a minister in her family church. Colonel Stevenson is also an award-winning quilter.
I promised I was gonna behave today. What did just jump out of my mouth? All I wanna say since we get to talk later is, I am so happy to be here with you. I am so happy to be here with the leaders that don't want Kentucky, but that this world is counting on. If you haven't noticed, everybody looks at America and says, "What do we do?" And usually, we have an answer. So I'm happy to be here to see so many people. I'm happy to be here with my colleagues who fight the good fight every day. And if they don't want you to think about or talk about it, what am I gonna do? If you look around, there are no dinosaurs, no cave, men or women. That means you were born for a time such as this. That means you've got something that this world needs so we can right this ship. Be the leader that turns this around.
Thank you. Thank you, Colonel. Absolutely. Well said. Our next special guest is State Senator Karen Bird. Karen Bird is a medical doctor. Senator Karen Bird was first elected to the Kentucky State Senate in a special election in June of 2020 to represent the 26th Senate District, and was re-elected in 2022. She is the first female physician to serve in the Kentucky General Assembly, bringing decades of healthcare experience to the legislative work. As a diagnostic radiologist, Dr. Bird has practiced in rural and urban hospitals across public and private systems and within the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs. Dr. Bird is currently the only Jewish member of the Kentucky State Senate. She has served in leadership roles with her congregation, including on the board, and is chairman of the Worship and Ritual Committee. She continues to be an advocate for public health, reproductive rights, and expanded access to care across the Commonwealth. Dr. Bird is a mother of two children, Rachel passed, and her late Henry Bird. So Karen Bird, Senator.
Thank you, sir. And thank you, honestly, to each and every one of you that came out today. Because this is honestly what we need. And this is my hope for the future in this great Commonwealth and in this country. Guys, gone are the days when we can just assume that it's gonna be politics as usual, and we don't have to pay attention until it gets close to an election. Those days are so far gone. And if you don't realize it, you're not looking up and looking around. And if your family members don't realize it, and the people you work with, the people you have dinner with, you need to start talking to them. Because you're here. You realize where we are and what we are facing. But you gotta understand, guys, the majority of people are not yet paying attention. They're busy. They have their work, they have their kids, they have their schools, they have their day-to-day. And they don't have the time, and they don't have the wherewithal. And it is not our job to hold that against them. It is our job to bring them forward together. Because when you ask people, "Do we believe in seeing a judge before you're picked up off the street in this country?" The majority of people will say, "Of course, yes. What are you talking about?" They do not realize that at this point, guys, in a minute, we are going around the country snatching people up off the street, putting them on planes, and deporting them to foreign countries without ever having seen a lawyer or have a warrant that's signed by a judge. If that doesn't terrify you, then you don't really understand how quickly democracies can dissolve. So we're here, and I'm speaking to the choir. I mean, my job, honestly, is to say, "Thank you. Thank you so much for showing up. Thank you for caring. Thank you for realizing, guys," and this is the truth, I am not exaggerating, "we are at a precipice in this country." We are, we have the ability. If enough citizens stand up and say, "Not on my watch," we can stop it. But it is going to take us. It is going to take the people. Because unfortunately, guys, a lot of our elected politicians are too scared to say it themselves. I mean, guys are too scared to show up here to talk to this group of people, much less to stand up to power and say, "This is America. This is the United States of America. We believe in treating people with dignity. We believe in equality. We believe that people have the right to make choices over their own bodies." And it's being taken away. So thank you, thank you, thank you. I don't wanna leave you with a sad message. I wanna leave you with a really happy, really proud message that you are here. You care enough to show up. You care enough to speak out. And together, together, we can, we can impact what is happening in this state and in this country. So thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen. Excellent. Right on words, for sure. Our next special guest is Monica Dean. Monica is running for U.S. Congress against Congressman Massey. Monica is a Navy combat veteran, mother, and the 2023 Kentucky Woman Veteran of the Year. Monica served in Operation Enduring Freedom and Operation New Dawn, and has since dedicated her life to advocating for veterans, working families, and rural communities. She works in tech as a senior project manager and lives in a multi-generational household, caring for her grandparents while raising her young son. She's now running for Congress in Kentucky's 4th District to take on corruption, unite the Commonwealth, and bring real leadership back to the people. Monica Dean.
Thank you. So this is my first time doing this as an official candidate. So I'm so happy to be here, and I am so impressed with the show up here. This is amazing. So I get asked all the time, "Why would you do this? Why would you run for office? Why would, especially this office, against Thomas Massey?" I know that it's a challenge. I know it's hard to see, but I am up for the challenge. My lived experience gives me the tools that I need for this race. I am a mother to a soon-to-be four-year-old boy. He went through some difficulties when he was younger and had to meet speech therapy. So I have used a lot of these programs that we are concerned about losing. And I'm very passionate about them and protecting them and expanding them. And the same goes with the VA. I have gotten my health care at the VA since I've gotten out of the Navy in 2012. And I know what veterans experience and what we need. And I also know that, just in general, we need better access to health care, especially in rural areas. We are losing hospitals in rural Kentucky. So I am here to fight for you. I am here to listen to you and to hear the issues that you are most concerned about. And thank you all so much for coming. As I wanna echo what the previous speaker before me said, you are the leaders that we need. So thank you for stepping up, and please continue talking to your neighbors, build community. That's what we need right now in this moment. And let's keep fighting. Thank you.
I wanna thank all of our special guests for coming here today. It's wonderful to see these strong leaders and representing us in the legislature. I also wanted to make sure that if there's any other elected officials or anybody on the councils that would like to be recognized. I know Georgina Lavers is here, and I would just wanna give a shout out to Georgina. Thank you for coming. Sally, Sally Berry. Hello, Sally. Yeah, Sally Berry. These are both representatives on the Shelbyville City Council. I also wanna let you know that we invited all of the elected local, regional, and federal representatives, folks that represent you today. And as you can see, they did not decide to be here today. One more recognition before we invite the public to participate in this town hall. I just wanna say thank you to the committee that was responsible for putting all this together. Lynn, and Fielding, and Jane, and Jamie, and Julie, and James. If I'm missing anybody, raise your hand. But, and Greg, absolutely, Greg. And Vicki, Vicki. All of those folks made this happen, and I wanna give them the special thanks and a round of applause. All right. Town halls in America, we've asked you to sign up to speak, and as we call your name or recognize you, please step up. You're welcome to speak. We would like you to limit your discussion for three minutes. My lovely wife is gonna be a luxury, a lazy timer. She has an hourglass that I bought for $3 on Amazon. So we might be a little bit off on the time. But if you hear the bell, it means your time is rapidly approaching. So the first speaker we have today, I'd like to recognize Todd Brown. And he's gonna give us a little bit about leadership.
If you're losing to Donald Trump and Eric Reid, you're using the wrong clicker. And the leadership in the Democratic Party has been lacking, really, most of my life, from top to bottom. It's time to go back to your local chapters, define what the progressive ideas are locally, and run on those ideas. And I can give you a perfect example in this state. Amy McGrath ran against Mitch McConnell a few years back. Democratic Party got her $100 million to run a campaign against Mitch McConnell. A few years later, and she loses, got about 37% of the vote. A few years later, a young progressive man in Kentucky, Charles Booker, ran a progressive campaign, and with hardly any help at all, shamed from the Democratic Party, turned the state more blue than did Amy McGrath running a progressive campaign. Define those progressive ideas. When it comes time to mean what you say, don't back down. Don't tell us that you're gonna go green and then open up a record amount of oil and gas leases in the Gulf, or open up the Willow Oil Fields for oil. And one of the reasons, it's time for self-reflection. One of the reasons why the Democratic Party is losing, yeah, Republican leadership now is awful. But one of the reasons is that we lack self-reflection. And what is it that we can do? What part of this is our fault? And it's my opinion, it's being unwilling to run in progressive way. And that's what I got to say.
Thanks, Todd. Well done. Our next speaker is Catherine Martin, and she talked a little bit about health care.
So I know health care's been a more hot topic in the news lately with the United Healthcare CEO shooting and moving to Mangione. And I work in health care, and I'm, can you hear me now? What about now? More? Okay. So I work in, I work in health care. I work in a private hospital setting. I'm a surgical assistant, so I'm in the most profitable part of the hospital. Surgery makes the most money. Every day, what is prioritized there is money to everyone. It's the turnover time, this equipment we don't have that they will not order because they won't approve it in the budget. But our CEO makes $3.5 million a year. Our top 12 executives make a median of 100, or I'm sorry, $1.5 million a year. And they're telling us that we don't have the money for supplies, or staff, or save ratios. And constantly, we are told to cut corners in a manner that is unsafe for patients. I see this every day. This isn't a nice hospital. So we, as a collective group, need to be more aware of the problems in health care concerning patient safety and concerning that it is a for-profit system. When we bring up concerns to administrators, we get told, "Oh, yes." And then the ending line is, "But we're a business. We run like a business." No, we're not a business. I think it's evil, like it can't get more evil than monetizing something everyone needs. So just, yeah. Just be more aware of that, and something we can do is pushing back and just speaking up against hospitals and speaking up and just being more vocal about it.
Thank you, Catherine. Right on. You know, it takes a lot of gumption to come up and speak, so I don't wanna forget to say thank you for all of you that are stepping up and letting us hear what you think. The next speaker is Leslie Brown, and she's gonna speak about the state of the world.
No? Can you hear me now? Okay. If I throw up, I hate speaking in front of people. I forgot my left hearing aid, so if you're gonna yell at me, yell in my left ear. First of all, I wanna thank the local Democratic Party. I'm a very proud, I'm very proud to be a Democrat. And first of all, I'm gonna tell you that I'm not degrading the human, human being when I say that there are too many rats in a cave, and when there are, they will eat each other. We do not have enough natural resources to sustain the human population. Everyone, from the so-called leader of the United States to local government, is for growth at any cost. They are making us poor, ignorant. They are purposely causing chaos. These are tools to keep us from rising up. Systematic racism, or systemic, excuse me, racism is at the helm. We are not, not like Nazi Germany. We are Nazi Germany. This is who we are, Karen. Thank you. So we have concentration camps, literally, both in and out of this country. In Florida, immigration camps, cell cell doors. immigration camps, cell cell doors, I could go on. Erasing our history of systemic racism is systemic racism. You know, just read where they're considering firing, I'm sure they will, the head of the Library of Congress. They're going to erase our history. I had to teach myself local history of people of color. I didn't even know it when I graduated from high school. I was a pauper. And I know that we know how to teach history. We're not doing it anymore, but, but we don't know how to teach empathy. I don't know how to teach empathy. What, how do you make somebody happy if they don't have it? Money and power are the only language that these people understand. Use your dollars wisely and engage in simple disobedience. Rise up! The time is, way past time to really look for ball. What's happening? It's past it. And I love you, my late dad, Horace Brown, I hope that you can see this. Thank you.
Thank you Catherine. I know your dad is a wonderful man. Thank you very much. The next speaker is Amy Koozie, I believe. And Kazi, oh Amy, Amy. Oh, maybe an hour in Sunday School class. Come on up Amy. Speak right.
Y'all, I got to apologize because I misunderstood what I was signing up for. I have a question. And I was, it was mostly for you ladies. With so many elected Republicans in Kentucky, I'm from the blue dot of Louisville. How and where are Democrats most effectively speaking to the voters? Yeah, I understand there's an awful lot of work done on the internet, but I'm not particularly talking about that. I think about Andy Beshear talking about we need, we need to share our why. I'm scared to talk about, to talk to people who have a different opinion than mine. I want to learn how to talk to those people. And I want to, I want to understand. So, if anybody's got any advice for me on how to open my heart when it's, when I find so frightened, I'd appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you Amy. If this is a question and answer, and that's an excellent question, I think I got the heart of the question is Amy wanted to know how are Democrats speaking? Just speaking, I suppose. Open your heart. Emma.
Thank you. It's an outstanding question. When I raised my hand and said, yes, I'll run for the US senate from Kentucky, if, I wouldn't do it because I was a pretty face, I wouldn't do it. Thank you. Because there's a way to win, there's a pathway. And that pathway is you. Everybody's got a cellphone. What if your circle of influence is in your cellphone, in your church, in your hairdresser, at the grocery store? Number one, use the people that you know. Number two, people are looking for a way out now. They're sorry they voted the way they voted, but they don't want to look stupid. So, don't make them look stupid. Just welcome them back. Number three, talk about things that are important. Every child should be loved and protected. How are we going to do that? Don't go talking points, there's certain things that you just can't talk about because we don't have that relationship built up. We must talk about values that every life needs to be lived, that every person has a right to have healthcare. Talk about the things that matter to you and don't talk about their mamas. I know! Just stay focused on the issue. And then finally, if you look around here, most of us have had a couple of years under our belt. But we all know, young people, where are they? Why are they holding their vote hostage? Why are the people that are registered non-voting? The only people that can find out are you. I could send a million texts, they don't know who I am, but they know who you are. Listen to them. Because if you, if you listen, I hope they're not coming for me. Thank you! So, we've got to be focused. Now, when they say they're eating cats and dogs, we go, whoa! When they say they're teaching critical race theory to first graders, we go, whoa! And they say crazy because they know we're going to go after it and not stay on our strategy. We can't do both things at once. Figure out what you're going to do, do it consistently and don't stop until it's done. That's how we win.
I'm going to put a little, little pitch in here for people who are scared. Because a lot of people are scared right now and rightfully so. And there's power in numbers. There's power in knowing who your allies are. And unfortunately, it's not as well organized as we want it to be. And a lot of people are saying, oh, the Democratic Party is dead. It is not dead. It is not dead, guys, particularly not here in Kentucky. It is far from dead. We can actually use the structure of the party to get to know your neighbors and actually realize that there are more people out there that agree with you than don't. I mean, I personally have knocked a total of 30,000 doors. 20,000 in Oldham County and 10,000 in Jefferson County. And I cannot tell you how many times I have been told by people who answered their door that I am the only Democrat in the neighborhood. And that is not true. I have the data in front of me, how your neighbors are registered and a hell of a lot of them are registered Democrats. We don't know each other. We've had no reason to need to know each other. But we desperately need to find out who each other are now. And the best way to do that in this state is precinct by precinct. It's already been drawn out. A precinct, literally, somebody could go and knock everybody's door, not everybody. We give you lists of people based on how they vote. And you go and you introduce yourself and you say, I'm a Democrat. I can't tell you how many people have told me, I'm the first Democrat that ever showed up at their door. We can do this. There is a party organization that is desperately trying to get this done in this state. And it just takes a couple of people saying, I will stand up and be a precinct leader. I will give the list of who is in my precinct. I will reach out to every one of those people individually and personally. I can invite them to my home, I can go knock on their door, I can get to know who they are. And then together, together, we can find strength in numbers. So, I am really suggesting, particularly for people who are scared and don't know how to start, the party has a lot of information that can help you find other people of goodwill. And that's what we need to do right now. People of goodwill need to stand together and stop the politics of division that are trying to destroy this country. And the first thing you have to do is you got to figure out, who do I live next to? How do we work together? So, thank you for the questions. Great, great, great questions.
So, I am coming from a little bit of a different perspective as I've not held office before. Something that has worked very well as far as finding ways to connect with people who may have differences of opinion in my life has been to find the people that I have a connection with already and do things with them. So, I've been very involved in the VSW, the American Legion. I get very involved with moms groups. If you've been impacted by specific things like, you know, different healthcare issues, cancer, you know, if you've survived cancer, there's a lot of groups out there that support each other in these things. If you get out there in your community, these are ways to already have something in common with your neighbor before you have these conversations. And we can show, we can lead by example in that. And it's a lot less scary, I guess, to have conversations with people when you already have a connection. So, that's just my two cents.
Okay, we're going to move on. Next speaker is Vicki Lee, liberty and justice. Vicki.
We began our event today with the Pledge of Allegiance. And many, if not most of us grew up with the Pledge of Allegiance. We pledge allegiance to our flag, to our country, and we pledge liberty and justice for all. I just want to know when we added the quotation marks around the word "all"? Where does it say that we're only to fight for the rights of those who look like us, act like us, believe like us, speak like us, love like us, or in the same tax bracket as us? These are not the principles that this country was built on. It's my understanding that these remarks are being shared with our current representatives. And so, I would like to challenge those representatives in Frankfurt to do some soul searching. We've been known as a state of warmth, a state of welcome, and now we're also becoming known as a state of hate mongers who have the most vulnerable among us that are being left to fight for themselves. Our representatives, you legislate against the LGBTQ community with an extra dose of vitriol for our trans friends and neighbors. You legislate against our children who depend on the strength of our public schools, as many of them could not afford private schools and some would not even be welcome in our private schools, even if they did have a voucher. You legislate for lax gun laws, even though gun violence is the leading cause of death of children and teens in Kentucky. You legislate against our immigrant community, causing them to feel as though they are unwelcome and causing them to feel as though they may be stripped of their rights without due process of law. You legislate against diversity, against equality, against inclusion, like those are dirty words. Don't all Kentuckians deserve the best protections we can offer? Liberty and justice for all, all means all.
Let's take our Brandon Davis, speaking on law enforcement and policing.
Glad to be here. Brandon Davis, I went to Shelby County High School, 2016 state champion, went to college, I have a record there, cousins Calvin John. So, a few months ago, I was faced with a wrongful arrest and I'll just show you my evidence of my wounds. My name is not on there. I can only stand for so long at this point. But the way I live my life, I was hunting and fishing is how I grew up, country boy, live out in Baghdad. I just hate to find myself out in the mountains somewhere, you know, with these problems. And also, I've been the skin color that I am to be, you know, game for other people in West Virginia. And I'm really up here speaking for the innocence, for the innocent. Because the officers that came up to me, they had no right to, I guess, search for weapons. But also, they were scared, just based off them being completely uncomfortable with my skin. I couldn't do anything, but they did absolutely everything. And now they have to face the consequences of their actions. And they're white. And honestly, one guy, he's not even from this country. He comes here and serves our country by being the police. We need our police, who else are we going to call? And he comes here and he does his best, but everybody makes a mistake. And you know, and I can be as wicked and want to, you know, be as mad as I want to, but God gave His only son. I'm only here looking to show love and to find a common ground between people of my color and the police. Because people come up to me and talk about their influences with black people. You know, we went to school back then and they grew up on Johnny Rebel. So, I understand that. And honestly, I think a common ground between the black people and law enforcement is to have a best of color. I suggest pink because pink is a lighthearted color. It can't be green. Green is a sense of authority. But simply responsible officers, and they all failed to intervene when they kept violating my constitutional rights. So, if we have an officer that is there for somebody, a pink vest, come here and protect your rights. There can be officers on the side to law enforcement when needed, but somebody needs to be policing. There's two different things. Law enforcement and policing are two completely different things. And but when the police come to law enforcement, those are when their rights get violated.
Brandon, well said. And we respect that. Thank you. Next speaker is David Hamilton on healthcare. David?
I was born and raised in the hills of Appalachia by a single mother on a fixed income. In 1998, she was fighting non-Hodgkin lymphoma for the fourth time. And she soon became one of the first trial patients where they used her own bone marrow to perform a transplant. Mom remained in remission for the rest of her life and I will forever be grateful to university medicine for allowing me to grow up with a parent around at all. However, chemotherapy back then wasn't exactly gentle and the damage had already been done. Eventually, her kidneys gave out. She spent her last years on dialysis, but not before being butchered by dozens of surgeries, trying and failing to install a working shunt anywhere on her body. When I went to college and lived on the campus dorms on the other side of the same county, her food stamps got cut to only $16 per month. The last time I saw her in the home I grew up in, she was eating nothing but cubes of Colby cheese with some mayonnaise spread on it. Her brother was a nurse who gave his life in the opening round of the pandemic helping others. Meanwhile, my wife wasn't able to get medication for her autoimmune disorder since it ran out of stock because Donald Trump spread dangerous lies and disinformation aided by my own family on Facebook. Then I had to watch both my grandparents succumb to dementia while Republicans voted down elder care and daycare. My great uncle went down a dark path after losing his son to suicide, spending a decade homeless on the streets, revived by paramedics no fewer than 75 times. Last month, I got fired from my job for using sick time to go see the doctor right after finding out I need surgery to get my gallbladder removed. Now, every day is a gamble, whether I'll make it to the ER in time or maybe I'll just die. Now, Republicans want to defund Narcan, preschool, Medicaid, Medicare, SNAP, and WIC while peddling dangerous vaccine skepticism during the first measles outbreak in decades with bird flu and who knows what else looming on the horizon. Laurel County just got flattened by an EF4 tornado, but we're cutting funding and staff at the National Weather Service. Today, all of three Kentucky's regional NOAA offices have zero minimum Today, all of three Kentucky's regional NOAA offices have zero meteorologists in charge. Make that make sense. Millions of people are going to die as a result of these decisions, people you go to Sunday school with. How long until ICE rolls up here in Shelbyville and it's our friends, our neighbors, our loved ones that come for next? I'm 35 years old, and in my life, I've been to a lot more funerals than weddings. We're supposedly the most prosperous nation on earth. It didn't have to be this way. If we don't stop this now, there will be no going back. AI and robots are just around the corner and automation's already been taking our jobs. Any new factory opening up today is going to be using as little human labor as possible. We need social safety nets and we need them like yesterday. You can't work when you're dead. My name is David Paul Hamilton, and I've had enough.
Thank you, David. I just want to mention that we had a Democratic Executive Committee vote a couple of weeks ago, and all of us baby boomers in the room were tickled to death when David walked in the room. And I want to say, this is what a town hall is all about. Thank you, David. The next speaker is Julester Bennett, and she's going to talk about public transportation.
Okay, well, first of all, I want to say, I worked quite a few years with the Hispanic children, and my child's transgender. So, I'm not really happy with our administration either. But I'm epileptic, and I hope to use a grant to get around, which is a little uncomfortable. So, our city's getting bigger. We have a lot more factories coming in. I see a lot of subdivisions going up. I'd like to have public transportation, and I'd like to know how we can get public transportation. I've even thought of a route for a bus. I mean, I know the homeless are getting around and they're walking well on our sidewalks, and I'd like to be able to do that myself, but I just can't. And I just would like to know what it's going to take to get public transportation, a bus that's going up or down Main Street, going around Freedom Way into Kroger's, going up Taylorsville Road. I think it could be done. I've kind of thought of a map myself in my head that could go around Shelbyville, you know, daily and make some money, pay for it. And there's lots of people, I mean, I have a driver, but she's not always available. And I know she drives other people that have to pay for her, and it's just difficult. I'm happy to sit on a bench for 20 minutes or half an hour to take a bus if I really need to go somewhere. So, my question is, how can we get this started in Shelbyville? We're big enough to do it now.
Well said. Thank you. Our next speaker is Bonnie Burks Gray. Bonnie, you up for it? Here she comes. You've got a lovely day in Shelby County. We're blessed. Thank you all for coming again. Hey, Bonnie.
When I signed up, I hadn't planned to speak, but I put a depends on my, not because I need one today, but because I thought that it would depend on whether no one else brought up the subject. And the subject that I'd like to share with you about is, we have one of the most beautiful counties in the state, and we're letting it get destroyed. And if you don't think so, start driving the back roads again. And some of the properties that has been rezoned so that people can take agriculture land to be subdivisions. I know we need the housing, but there are folks out there that are investing in houses that are just going to be tornado fodder. They won't withstand the wind, they won't withstand any kind of real natural issues, real natural disasters, because we're so loose about what can be built in them. And they pay $300,000 to $500,000. They'll be paying mortgages on junk. We don't have the Planning and Zoning Commission that we need to be having in our community. Shelby County has the most unique relationship of any county in the state with regards to how their Planning and Zoning Commission works. And it doesn't work for us. It works for the developers. So, I love it that you all are here at this program, but I think it's the third Tuesday of every month, Planning and Zoning meets. And you need to make your presence there, too, if you're going to protect your community. The other thing that I just share is, I don't know even what a first-class stamp costs right now, although I buy them all the time. The important thing is to put a stamp on a few letters out there and set aside time every single week to notify your representative. And you better start with the ones that are here in Shelby County first, because they're really sneaking up things in Kentucky.
Thank you. Public service announcement. There are restrooms, and they're in the green metal building. A little hike in the back if you all need to use the facilities. The next speaker is Chad Stess. Chad? Here we are. Stess from Oldham County.
Good afternoon, friends. My name is Chad Stess. If you want to try to spell that, good luck. It's like stress without the R, S-T-O-E-S-S. I came here today to introduce myself. I might be an Oldham County resident now, but I'm one of Shelby County's native sons. I graduated from Shelby County about 21 years ago this week, actually. It's been a long time coming. It's nice to see so many faces out here, so many people coming together for the same cause. A week from today, actually not even, Thursday or Friday this week, I will make an announcement about. I am going to be running against Lindsey Tishner for State Senator in District 6, which covers Oldham, Trimble, and Oldham County. I've spent my life growing up on the farm, working in factories to include Martinrea. For the last decade of my life, I've been at Ford's Kentucky Truck Plant. Through the course of my days, I have seen so many things happen, good and bad. But I look at Shelby County and I realize that more people need to come together and stand up, and we need to do that across the board, across the state. We need people to come together, not as independents, Democrats, or Republicans. We need people to come together as friends and neighbors, and most importantly, as Kentuckians. The legislation that's been passed in Frankfurt the last few years has harmed our people. It's harmed our communities. It's destroying our public education system. It's destroying our healthcare system. And I encourage anyone here today with a heart in their chest to stand up for the people you love and to get out. To get out for the people that are running for office, to get out for your friends, to get out and show support for the right reasons. Thank you.
Thank you and good luck. Next speaker is Chris Servia on immigration. Hi, Chris.
All right, can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Great. So, I actually wanted to kind of respond, I think it was to Mrs. Stevenson. She kind of asked a question about making a connection with people. I can give you an answer to that just from anecdotally. My brother, he actually works at the Kentucky Ford Truck Plant. He works on the line, and, you know, he grew up just like me. I'm a lifelong Democrat. That's how we grew up. He changed during 2016. And the biggest thing that I can tell you was that we were told our whole lives by our parents, by many of you inside of this area, you're my parents' age, if you're in your 70s. You guys told us that if we work hard, we can do anything. And we appreciate that so much. However, that's not what happened. And a lot of us in the millennial generation, Zenials who are that Gen X range, they see that today, it's not for us, it's for a few. And even though the man who's president is one of the few, he said something that resonated with them. And all of the things, immigration, all of these humanity things that we are talking about today, that blow our mind, that people don't hear us when we talk about it, it's because of the one thing. They, he said something to them that resonated with them, and that was a path toward a better life for them. That is what resonated with them. And I am telling you this as a person who talks to my brother on a daily basis, and he goes, "I understand this, Chris, but I see a better path in my life with him as president," because he thinks about the economy. If you want people to listen about the humanity, we have to talk about the economy first. We have to. It is something that we cannot get past. We have to tell the generation that you told us, your babies, you told your babies, hey, there is a better life for you if you work hard. We have to work together to really prove that to them, because right now, we don't feel it, we don't see it, we are not. I will tell everyone right now, if we want to work on immigration, if we want to work on LGBTQ rights, if we want to work on these things, we have to open their ears, and their ears start with their pocketbooks.
Thank you, Chris. I think you should be a candidate for... Next speaker is Linda Ellerwalt, Fear in History.
Okay, hi, everybody. I have been working on a lot of issues my whole life. I'm 74. One of them was separation of churches state, and, which I'm still passionate about. But along the path of working on that issue, I came across a lot of American history. And I discovered that we have been here before many times in our history. There's a great book by Jeffrey Stone called Perilous Times, and it's, you know, detailed reading, but it'll show you that we have been here before. We're not Nazi Germany, or we're not, you know, fascist Italy. We are America. We have a history of doing this, and what we are doing is allowing fear to cause us to hand over our rights to government. We did it with the Alien and Sedition Acts, the very beginning of our country, when we were afraid of going to war with France. We did it in the Civil War, when there was a lot of fear going on. And President Lincoln suspended habeas corpus and put editor's newspapers in jail. Some things we don't really talk about with Lincoln, but he did that. World War II, we interred our Japanese citizens, and we told German citizens that they couldn't go out at night past 9:00. We had 9/11, and boy, did we hand over our rights then with the Patriot Act. So, we've been here before. We're in a climate of bad fear. It's being mongered all the time. And some of the ways that it's being addressed is by othering. Othering is when we point to people and say, oh, those immigrants, they're all insane, murder, rapists, you know, that kind of language. Our federal workers, you know, they're all committing fraud up there in the federal government. You know, all those other countries in the world around us are trying to cheat us whenever we do trade deals. This is like fear mongering, and we know who's mainly doing it, but we all have, you know, we have a Congress full of abused wives who don't feel like they can say anything. And we can break this pattern. One of the things we have to deal with and face is that the head of our country is a narcissist. And I don't know if you know anything about narcissism. I had a narcissist in my family. They're very destabilizing to family structure, and our president is very destabilizing to democracy. And just to show a little bit, I'm going to blow away, on fear mongering. This is our president on Truth Social saying, I'm on, he's on a mission from God, and nothing can stop what is coming. Okay? He put this up. What kind of stuff is this? And then there's a, there are posts about Bruce Springsteen, where our president calls him all kinds of names, and I have this if anybody wants to read it. But at the end, he basically, he basically threatens Bruce Springsteen by saying, well, tell him to keep his mouth shut until he gets back into the country, and then, and then we'll see how it goes for him. Just total fear mongering by our president. And I guess I'm done.
Well, in my household, the boss has spoken. Next speaker is John Graham, Education and International Students. John's a retired history teacher at our house school.
Well, I'm not very retired. I substituted 129 days last year and the year before, and that's all I could do without getting my retirement penalized. So, and what I've noticed is Shelby County has become an international community. We probably have about 40% of our students in the public schools are, their parents or grandparents are from countries other than the United States. And to me, it's become a richer place to live. Do we have, yeah. Do we have to worry about finding someone to fix our roof, or to mow our grass, or to, you know, landscape our neighborhoods? No. And most of these immigrants, the students are well behaved in school, they're respectful, and I learned a lot. When I ask them about their grandmother and their grandfather and so on, and how they're doing, they have a story to tell. And I certainly don't want their story to be, oh, we have to worry about having them deported. And my message to Eric Reed, Eric Reed was my student at West Middle School, and Eric has always been polite to me, but he has never asked me what I thought about this. And I want to tell Eric, you know, why haven't you proposed a bill to make it easier for the Shelby County immigrants to become citizens? Why does it cost $20,000 or $30,000 or more to become a citizen? And our children, our Hispanic, Latino, and now many African children, why do they have to worry about their grandparents maybe being deported? This shouldn't happen. Our Ms. Decker and Mr. Reed must be the number one priority to have legislation to allow our citizens to be, our friends and neighbors who are not citizens, to become citizens.
Thank you, John. Absolutely. Next speaker is Jane Ellen Thomas, Our Country and State. Next speaker is Jane L. Thomas, Our Country and State.
I guess it's my time. I'm a 74-year-old grandmother, and I'm here again to voice some of my concerns that a lot of us have been talked about, talked about today. I believe in this country. I lost my father and my oldest brother when I was eight years old. And if it hadn't been for Social Security, my mother and my brother would not have made it. So I believe in my country. I went to school on Pell Grants and loans. I did not have money to go to college, but I spent 30 some odd, uh-oh, thank you, I spent 30 some odd years of my life in public education as well. And so I feel like the government invested in me, and I gave back to my country. I want to also, on what was just the last speaker was talking about, I looked at the just last night, pictures of the Shelby County graduates and the Collins graduates in this county. And I mentioned to my husband, you know, what's notable in there, we should look at it, and look at the names and the faces and how diverse this community is. And that's something I agree to be, that I feel I should be proud of, and we should be proud of. And the fact that we have representatives that are making, as Vicki talked about, making DEI dirty words and turning our country against those three aspects. You know, our country is based on three branches of government. We have executive, legislation, and our judicial branch. We are not governed by executive orders, as how, what is happening in our country like that. That should break everybody down. And by the way, we are not loyal to Venezuela, which is being used as just, you know, lie, lie, lie. Our courts are currently working overtime to try to keep our democracy together. But it's time for people to work together, you know? I'm old, and, but I'm still showing up and trying to make the Democratic Party in this town to be as best, the best party that it can be. And we need help, and we need young people. I almost turned a cartwheel when I saw Dave come to our reorganization at my age to be involved, and we're getting young people. And that's what we need. We got to have some people, and young people that will follow in the footsteps. Our country may not be perfect, but I never thought that I would live in a time where people are disappearing from our streets, as our representative talked about earlier, I was so glad to hear, to foreign prisons without any due process. I mean, we even live in a country of law. I mean, people should be outraged, people should, and many of us are, and there's people in our streets. I never thought, back in March, I showed up at Frankfurt, and how many people showed up at Frankfurt on a Tuesday afternoon to talk and to show that this is not what we stand for, that we believe in human decency. Spending bill, our legislature just passed a spending bill, a bill that again gives so much money tax-free billionaires. I mean, I'm just a retired teacher, but I bet we can come up ways to grade, graduate the tax bill so middle class and everybody benefits. But anyway, my wish is that we all come together and fight for our democracy.
Next speaker is John Shealy, Private School Aide. John? I wanted to, while John's coming up, to point out that we do have a Shelby County Democrats table here today, and if you haven't signed up, we need your email and your phone number, and here you are, John.
Hi, everybody. I wanted to speak about the backdoor way, the legislation is, the legislature is going to allow vouchers, you know, without any input from the public, unlike the referendum that was shot down to allow vouchers. And I'm just saying, you know, I've gone to, I went to Frankfurt in April, and I went to the demonstration in Louisville about a month ago, and the, there is no corporate media covering these events. And in Louisville, there must have been 3,000 people, you know, and it was in an area of town that wasn't very busy, so nobody could see them. So what I'm saying is, what we need to do is to locally demonstrate, you know, in, on main street, you know, and frequently do that, you know, with signs and placards, you know, giving our opinions on, on, you know, what needs to be done. And we know what needs to be done, and, you know, I'm very encouraged in Louisville to see so many people turning out with signs and with speeches and, you know, giving their stories. But if there's no coverage, the word doesn't get out. So what has to be done, has to be done locally, in my opinion. And, you know, vouchers will be backed towards by the legislature, legislature, because it's predominant Republican, and they will do their Republican thing, which is screw everybody, you know, and take the money from the public schools and give them to the private schools. And I just, you know, I'm from New York, by the way, and, you know, there's, that thing wouldn't fly there, that's the only thing. But I'm happy to live here, and I love this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John, well said. It's a good segue to make really a public announcement about a No Kings Rally here in Shelbyville on June 14th from 1:00 to 3:00 at the Stargazer Plaza. If you want more details about that, please see Vicki at the Voices for Justice table. But again, that's the No Kings Rally, how about that for a nice slogan? Also, I'd like to say that we are, that we do have local newspaper here today, and, and so we are getting newspaper coverage. We thank you for that. The next speaker is William Linkman, Taking It Back. Come here, you name it. Simmons. Oh, William, William.
Dad lived out here his entire life. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is William Simmons, and I'm actually from Bullock County, visiting today. Dad lived here his entire life, lifelong Democrat, and I wanted to talk to you all about taking Kentucky back for the Democrats. And what I'm here to do is to challenge you, no matter your age, no matter your ability to consider running for public office in the state of Kentucky. Whether that's your local city council, whether it's the dog catcher, whatever you think you can contribute to, make that run. As a state, one of the things that kills Democrats in Kentucky is so many offices go uncontested. There are so many of us today here as Democrats who want to participate, but haven't made the decision on running our sales. I challenge you, instead of waiting for other people to make that run, consider making the run yourself, whether that's city council, whether it's the mayor's office, whether it's like the gentleman over here who's going to run for the state senate. These offices go unchallenged. As a Bullock County Democrat, we have been out there raising people to run for offices that have never been filled. They end up being appointed by a judge-executive, but consider making the run. Be the change you want to see in this country. Thank you all.
Thank you, William. Next speaker is Michael Slatter, Talking, Taking Back the Democratic Party for Workers. And Michael's from Oldham County, and we've become fast friends, and he's a good, strong Democrat. Welcome, welcome, Michael.
Thank you, Kevin. All right. My name is Michael Slatter, and I represent a group out of Oldham County called Kentucky Citizens for Democracy. You can find us at kycitizens.org. You can also find us on Facebook. You all, I'm going to probably offer you a little bit of, maybe what you call tough love today, okay? I am, I've had enough of going to the, to the voting booth at Oldham County and seeing nothing but Republicans to choose from when I go to vote. I hear that you all might have some of the same problems over here in Shelby County. That's not democracy. That's like going to Communist China and voting, one party. That's, that's not democracy, all right? But unfortunately, the Democrats are not blameless for this. I've had enough of corporate Democrats like Nancy Pelosi and Chuck Schumer who stand for nothing. You all, not being Donald Trump is not a winning message. Does that seem like it's working for us right now? Hey, we're not Trump. That's not working for us. We have got to tell these corporate Democrats who are addicted to that money to hit the door, because we are going to stand for something. We are going to stand for Medicare for All. That's a winning issue. That's an easy issue. We should not be ashamed to stand for that issue. We're going to stand for taxing billionaires and the ultra-rich. That's a winning issue. Are you kidding me that Elon Musk has had several years when he's paid no federal income tax? How in the world can that happen in our country? When after World War II, when we had the fastest-growing middle class in the world, our top incoming earners paid 90% in taxes, and they considered it their patriotic duty to do something. How in the world are we not standing for issues like housing, a national jobs program, things that can actually help the working people of Kentucky and help the working people of our country? How in the world are we not standing for campaign finance reform and getting the corporate money? That's a win, out of politics, that's a winning issue. What are we doing, Democrats? Those are all winning issues. We have got to stand for something. But we are going to let this country slip into tyranny and fascism. I'm not being a drama mom. I taught the rise of fascism in, in Italy, in Germany, in Spain for over 20 years as a high school social studies teacher, and we're not far off. So candidates, let me just end by telling all the Democratic candidates over here, you better start standing for some of these issues, because you are no longer going to automatically get my vote just because you are not a Republican. You have to stand for something. Thank you all.
Representative Stevenson, Colonel Stevenson's going to step out here in a moment or two, and we'll give her an opportunity to wrap it up and respond if you'd like.
Absolutely. The one thing I've learned today is that in Shelby County, not only are there leaders, there are people that care, and you guys, like the gentleman said before, couldn't run for office, very articulate understanding the issues. So you ask, "What is missing?" And I'd say, "You..." When I go, and notice I said, "When I go to Washington," is your US Senator in 2016. To answer the gentleman that spoke earlier, the first thing is economics. I am tired of Kentucky being on the bottom of all the list and being called a poor state. We are a poor state, but it has nothing to do with the heart of the people and what we need to do for the people that live here. Number two, every, every time I turn around, no matter whether I'm in the Middle East, Africa, England, Germany, or any state in America, we all want the same things. We want our children to do better, we want our families to thrive, and we want to make sure that the life we have matters. So when we focus on that, we get the things done. What we need to do is just come together and focus on the issues and not the personalities. Focus on what needs to be done. So the question is, what are you going to do? Really? Nobody is going to come and save us. If you look at it, when Mahatma Gandhi said, "England, get out of my country," when Mandela was in prison for 27 years without a trial and came out the president because of his attitude, and then when Martin Keaton, Dr. Keaton said, "I'm going to stand for all people, not just black people, all people."
Human rights.
Every, human rights. And everyone, and when Dr. Keaton got up, he had black folks saying, "Martin, you're doing too much." He had white folks saying, "Martin, you're doing too much." But he got up anyway. Are you going to get up? If you look at the numbers in Shelby County, there are enough Democrats here to take it over. If you get up. So, so everybody, take, I'm going to go just one second, I'm going to be quiet. You can do something. This is a nice rally, this is really great, it's one of the best ones I've seen, but what really matters is what's going to happen when you go down those steps. If you don't know what you're going to do in your head right now, that means you ain't going to do nothing. I would challenge every speaker from this point forward, after you have your say, say what you're going to do. We all know what the problems are. What are we going to do? So I'll tell you this, if I got to go, I'm going to bore you, so I have to tell a war story. Everybody has something to give. I'm going to tell you about a leader that lived in the early 1900s, dropped out of the sixth grade, got buried at the age of 12, had 15 children. But she had a dream that one day, even though she didn't finish school, that her grandkids would go to school. So when her grandkid was born, she took on extra cleaning and did extra things, her 10 cents a month for an insurance policy. You know, some of you remember the accordion fouls, going door-to-door with the policy to pay the insurance man? Yes, I'm AT myself. And she paid on that insurance policy, month after month after month, and then she unexpectedly died. And then when I turned 18, the insurance company gave me the policy, because you see, Lucy was my grandmother. She was born in the early 1800s in a world that didn't accept her, but she dreamed the world for me. She stood for me when I couldn't stand for myself. Who's Lucy are you? Why will it matter that you were here today? 1,000 years from today, when they trace a world full of love, where every person is accepted, will they trace it back to this place? There were less people in the basement of that building that started the United States of America. 60-something men said, "We believe that these things are true for all people," although they had slaves. But they built a system. Now we've got double the number of people under this, under my voice, and we can't keep it together? Sorry. So here's the challenge, I'm doing all that I can, but I can't do it alone. If you've got breath in your body, go to seatusincforcandid.com and sign up. Okay, so thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
They're all in its best, for sure. Next speaker is Sally McLean, Crusade for Children. Sally?
Thank you. I don't know how many of you know that this is the only state in the United States that has the crusade for children. We worry during the pandemic, we didn't know whether families would come through or not for the crusade. Oh, and by the way, I serve on the advisory board, I forgot to tell you that. We didn't know whether they would come through or not, and they did. Families came through. I don't know what a penny is worth or not, but I know that they'll take them for the crusade, they'll take all the change you can give. This year alone, we had something like 248... This year alone, we had something like 240 agencies working to wanting $14 million for special needs children. I'm not sure the people in our country know that Medicaid will affect so many special needs children. A government is to take care of the most vulnerable people among us, not the wealthiest people among us. I had a friend that I grew up with that had a special needs brother. I went to school with her all the way through high school. I never saw her brother. We now have classes for special needs children. Shelby County raises a good amount of money, and I just signed my check today and didn't look at the number. But we did really well in Shelby County, raising money for the crusade. But it takes everybody to recognize that these are needs, and these are our most vulnerable among us. So please realize that Medicaid is going to affect more than you think. Thank you for letting me speak.
Well said, Sally. Thank you. Our friend and organizer Lynn Anderson is going to introduce our next speaker.
Yes, I would like to introduce the bravest lady in the place. Come on, Sinda. This is Sinda Compton. Sinda is a Republican. Let's show her our love. Well, if she has an important issue she'd like to share with you.
Oseo. I am Cherokee. I am Cherokee. Oseo. I'm Native American, and I'm here because I love Shelbyville. My ancestry came from Hopkinsville. We kind of escaped the Trail of Tears and settled around the Trail of Tears Museum down in Hopkinsville. So that's where I'm from. I raised six adopted foster children here in Shelby County. Love the schools. Corinth dome is great. Shelby County High School was great, too. They're all demigod and very much still my children. I am watching the news, and I'm not liking what I see. Shelbyville, I bought, I don't know if anyone knows, J.W. Miles from Baghdad, I bought his farm, Silent Sea, and that's where I raised my children. And Baghdad's wonderful. And I would much rather be stuck behind a tractor than stuck next door to an Airbnb. Keep Shelbyville, Shelbyville. Thank you. And wado is thank you in Cherokee.
Our next speaker is Kimberly Hawkins on community. Kimberly?
So I'm here to talk about community. I'm Kimberly. I'm 31. I actually was born and raised in Eminence, but moved to Shelbyville a few years back, but came to Shelbyville a lot. I love Shelbyville. We have a lot of different kinds of people here. We have a lot of different places where people come together and chit chat. I have learned more about, you know, being a Democrat or being progressive from the people that I've met, like in the coffee shop at, like, Sixth Avenue and stuff. I want to talk about two specific things, kindness and accountability. One, if you are an older person, talk to the younger people. Tell them like your story that you have been through, history, you know, but also listen to the younger people as well. You know, they have a lot of issues going on that are almost never seen in history before, at least for, you know, the United States. But also, if you're a younger person, listen to your older people, but also go out and volunteer. You know, there's a bunch of different things that you can do to help your community. The cliche goes, like, Rome wasn't built in a day, change doesn't happen overnight, kind of thing. Yeah, I think that's, sorry, I got kind of nervous.
Communication, I think she's talking about communication. The next speaker is Jesse Hayes, sidewalks and the trolley. And I'll have a Beatles poster that I was going to put up, but the planning committee said, "What are you going to put a Beatles poster up for?" And it is because all we need is love.
If I'm even loud enough for everyone? Good, good, all right. I shouldn't have brought my free loud anyways, but I have a question for everyone here. Who has ever actually rode on the trolley? Here we got some people. Did you enjoy it? Was it nice? Don't you wish it was running more often? Wouldn't that be real fun if it was actually just everyday running? Yeah? I agree. I think that we should have, you are, by the way, a woman after my heart, wanting better public transportation in this town. I agree. I think the public transportation here is quite bad. We also could use some better sidewalks. There's a few spots in town where the sidewalks ain't great, like Old Finchville, for example. I know the speed limit there is 35, but no one drives 35, and there is no sidewalk. And I always see kids walking up and down that road, and it's kind of terrifying. And I guess this is me just saying that I am going to be running in city council to better fix our transportation infrastructure. I think that's all I got.
Thank you, Kimberly. We have two city council members here. We announced them earlier, and perhaps you would like to talk to Kimberly afterwards.
Jesse, I'm sorry, Jesse.
Well, talk to Kimberly. You too. I would like to recognize a gentleman that I have good friends with and represents, he's a Shelby County native. His name is Joe Williams. He's the field representative of the Office of the Governor, Department for Local Government. He's a good Democrat, and he is on a daily basis with Andy Beshear, our wonderful Democratic governor. So, Joe, thanks, Joe, thanks for coming. So we have Kimberly, Jesse, and next is Derek. Derek, help me out with your name, please.
Sennical.
Sennical, all right.
Hi, my name's Derek Sennical. I'm a proud Democrat from Shelby County. Not originally, but I've made my home here now. Yeah, I wanted to talk about image, you know, and the root of image is imagined, you know? We all need to imagine what the Democratic Party could be like in this community and in this state, and what, and what the state will look like, when the Democrats have a majority in this state. I couldn't imagine something that happened eight years ago, I think it was eight years ago. I called the Democratic Party over at Fielding's office, and I said, "Are you looking for volunteers?" And they said, "Yes." And being a good dad, I dropped my son off at Fielding's office. He couldn't even drive yet. He said, "What will they do?" He goes, he said, "I want to be involved." I said, "Well, they'll, they'll have you do things, man." Sure enough, they made him a door knocker for the future governor, Andy Beshear. He's, he's gone on, and he is today the president of the Young Democrats of Louisville, Kentucky. So if you're wondering, what can I do? Drop your child or grandchild off at Fielding's office. This is what it's about. I never imagined that my son would be the president of the Young Democrats of Louisville. It's amazing. But these things happen, and if we imagine what can happen, it will happen. We are powerful. Thank you.
Well, about to wrap this up, we have one more speaker that's registered or signed up to speak, and that's Rosalind Causy. And Rosalind, want to come up?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I have kind of a response about teaching empathy that I thought of while I was here. The tough thing is, we need to be empathetic to people who need their basic needs met before they can be empathetic themselves. Some people can't feel empathy until they've been in a similar situation, which is very frustrating. And I thought I wasn't like this until I recently experienced it myself. I had an incident where a neighbor was having a crisis, and all I could focus on was that she was outside my window yelling at someone. Instead of minding my own business, I yelled back because I was so overwhelmed. As an explanation and not an excuse, I'm on the autism spectrum. This doesn't mean I don't feel empathy, but in this moment, I was too overwhelmed to access it. I can see where someone who has gone for years without having their basic needs met can turn to someone who lies to them about meeting their needs while petting hate, instead of listening to someone who tells them that they're a bad person for asking for their needs to be met, too. We have to remember and to be empathetic to the fact that Trump voters and non-voters have been lied to. We were all told that if we work hard, we'll thrive. We haven't had the empathy extended to us in terms of health care, childcare, education, or pay that every other wealthy country has. We need empathy at every level, and it has to become systemic for it to be accessible to most people.
Anybody else who would like to speak? Yes, sir. Come on up. This young man and I have been on stage at the Shelby County Community Theater. We were just on stage together.
Hello, my name is Colton Block. I'm a junior at Shelby County High, well, I was a junior, I just ended my junior. And I'm at the point in my life where I'm looking into colleges. We are in an affordability crisis within America for college. It costs, I'm looking at going to Northern Kentucky University, where it will cost me over $100,000 to get a four-year degree. Many people cannot afford that. I am lucky enough where I will probably get a help from my parents and many scholarships. Many Americans are not in that same position, one of those being my sibling. My sibling was forced to drop out because they did not have the ability to pay. This, we need something to do. We need to make college affordable for all Americans, whether that be making it free or increasing federal loans. Currently, our government is cutting these loans because they do not deem it important. I obviously have very negative feelings about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Colton. He's a good actor, let me tell you that. So it's time for you all to stand up and stretch. You've been sitting for, goodness, almost two hours. And we have one more announcement. It's the Bluegrass Barbecue. It's in Henry County, and Vicki's going to make one announcement, so give you all, give yourself an opportunity to stretch and listen to this announcement.
Thank you. In addition to the No Kings Rally, then if you want more information, please stop at the table over here, the Voices for Justice, but also there's a Bluegrass Barbecue. It's going to be June the 27th. It's going to be out in Henry County, but it's being sponsored by Carroll, Henry, Oldham, Owen, Shelby, and Triple County Democratic Parties. And it is a fundraiser for the Democratic Party. You can pick one of the flyers up at our table over here, and it has a QR code where you can go to it and get tickets, or it has a phone number that you can call to get tickets. Thanks.
One more comment from Monica, our candidate for U.S. Congress.
Thanks again, everyone. It was great to meet all of you, and I'll be speaking at the No Kings Rally in Shelbyville on the 14th. And I'll also be speaking at the Bluegrass Barbecue, along with Pamela Stevenson will be there as well, so you can hear from us again. And my launch for the campaign is June 29th in La Grange. You can find out more information online if you want to come and join us and get some snacks and talk about the campaign. So that's all I got.
Thanks again for our special guest, Karen Bird, and I appreciate everyone coming out today. I think we had an excellent, excellent town hall, and this is for democracy. Thank you.